If we could reconvene our meeting to open session, we have been in executive sessions since six o'clock to discuss three legal matters. Uh, can we please stand for the flag regents?
A bunch of agents to defy in the United States of America and to the Republic where it's been at its own location, whatever, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We have introductions.
Daya Purst.
Lauren Grasso.
Robert Teigen.
Jody Monroe.
Meredith Moriarty.
Catherine Natto.
John Wallson.
John McPhillips.
And Holly Delvaux and you McNay are unable to be here tonight. Um, do we have any pig or super students here tonight? Um, if so, you need to stay until nine o'clock or the meeting is over, whichever comes first, and be sure to sign out on one of the sheets. That will, that will appear at some point. Um, so to make sure you get credit, you have to sign out before you leave. Um, first up is the approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the March fifth, twenty five, twenty twenty-five regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Um, next we have the meeting reports. We start with the superintendent report.
Sure, thank you. Um, I want to just highlight what, uh, the district will be doing on March thirty-first. Uh, so on March thirty-first, we have a superintendent's conference day scheduled. We will be focusing on two of our core values, community and wellness. Staff members have been collaborating within their buildings and departments to choose meaningful ways to support the local community. Um, as part of this effort, we are excited to partner with a variety of organizations. Some examples include the Regional Food Bank, the Animal Protective Foundation, Carigreen Senior Living, Grassroots Givers Hospice, the Albany County Safe Harbor Program, Pine Hollow, Saint Catherine's Center Catholic Charities and Ronald McDonald House. Additionally, several trail and park cleanups are planned for the day as well. These are just many, a few of many initiatives taking place throughout the district. Um, additionally, some buildings, and they're highlighted on this slide, um, and departments will be collecting donations or fundraising to support these causes. Uh, we will send this information out to the community for those who are interested in helping to contribute. Um, so at Hamagrel, they will be collecting travel size shampoo and hygiene items for Saint Catherine's. Elsmere is making, I think, little granola bars for the, um, street school soldiers, which is an organization out of Schenectady. And Glenma is doing a book sale and the proceeds for that will benefit the Bethlehem Community Fund. Uh, again, there's a couple others that are still in the works of planning, so we'll provide updates and where people can make those donations as the date gets near. I'd like to extend my gratitude to all of our staff who've taken time to plan, organize and participate in the day. Uh, their jet dedication and generosity will have a meaningful impact on the community, demonstrating the power of service and strength um, in our shared commitment to making a difference. So I'd like to thank our staff because they really have been the ones to identify the organizations and what we'll be doing on that day. So, something different and hopefully it'll be good weather for those doing outside work. And that's my report.
Does anyone have any questions for Jody? Um, next we have, uh, board reports. Does anyone have anything to report? I just want to say, I believe anything goes. The High School Musical, um, is, I believe that's next week, April second.
Two weeks.
Is that two weeks? Okay, all right. Well, I know tickets are on sale now. Um, next is item C, student reports. Uh, does anyone here from student, High School Student Senate? Come on down.
Hello. Um, my name's Shalulu Corelli. I'm from the Bethlehem Student Senate. Um, recently, we've been working on planning a school, school dance. It's the Spring Fling. Tickets are on sale now, and then we're also planning to sell tickets at the door. The dance is this weekend, and we've been going around to local businesses to get donations. Um, many businesses like Swifties, My Place, I Love Books, um, McCarell's, and then Foco Taco have donated gift cards to us for a raffle that's going to be taking place. And then we've set up things like a photo booth, and then we're going to have activities like cornhole and ping pong for students to take place in. And we've been planning that for a few weeks now. It was scheduled for before break for, um, the winter dance, but we rescheduled it for the spring because it got canceled due to the snow. So we're hoping to have a few more kids than we planned to last time, and that's basically it.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have anyone here from middle school?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Macy, and to start off, we would like to congratulate all of our band members from elementary, middle school and the high school. Um, they performed at the band festival, which was last Thursday, so congratulations to them.
Congratulations to our eighth grade classmates who were recognized by their physical education teachers as recipients of the Capital Zone Leadership Award. These six students attended a ceremony this past Saturday when they were with other eighth grade students from around the region.
Another thing that's been happening is we just passed out our character T-shirts, and we would like to, um, thank everyone who has been displaying their character, their character strengths around the environment and the community.
Spring sports started at the high school level this week, and the modified teams will start in the next two weeks, and we wish all our classmates luck who are participating.
Um, this is one of my favorites, but we recently had a pie day event where the twenty-three staff members participated, and they got pied in the face. And all proceeds from this event are towards the, uh, math counts team, um, to raise enough money for their competition. And the cool thing about this is we raised money for this year's competition and next year's, so.
The Vernal or Spring Equinox falls tomorrow on March twentieth, and we want to wish everyone a happy spring. Thank you and good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, next we have, uh, item four, presentations. First, we have our food service presentation.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Claire Gurdine. I'm the food service director, um, and I'm here tonight to give a food service update. Um, so I wanted to start out with a little school lunch one-on-one, just a refresher on how, um, the school lunch program operates. Um, so school meal programs operate under the C funds, which are separate from the general funds. Um, the cafeteria operates as its own business within the school district, so the goal is that it is self-sufficient. Um, it's funded by federal and state meal reimbursements and cash sales. Um, it's governed by the USDA, um, and regulate, the regulations are administered by, uh, the State Education Department. Um, the school breakfast and lunch meal program must adhere to USDA, uh, nutrition regulations. So there's certain things that we have to serve, and there's certain things that we can't serve. Um, and we are what's called a standard claiming district, meaning our students either qualify for free meals, um, reduced priced meals or paid meals. Um, so we are not a free district at this time. Um, so I want us to start out with some highlights from the current school year, and I'm going to start out with some of our green initiatives. Um, so I'm really, uh, working towards food service, reducing its carbon footprint. Um, and Mark and the green team have really been helping us, uh, do that. Um, so currently in all of our kitchens, we are now composting. Um, we also are using produce, uh, from the school gardens at our six through twelve grade levels. Um, so this year we got produce out of the garden from about September to November. Um, and we also introduced more local foods onto our menus this school, school year as well. Um, we got a local food for schools grant, um, that totaled about thirty-five thousand dollars that we were able to use on local foods. Um, so we brought in local beef from Kill Coin, um, local cheese from the Argyle Cheese Farmer. Um, and we also brought in, uh, local maple syrup from Mountain Wind Farms in Burn. Um, some future plans for these green initiatives, um, is I'd like to expand the use of garden produce to our K through five grade levels. Um, I know Mark is working on expanding what he calls our kitchen garden at the high school, which, which I love that he calls it our kitchen garden. Um, so I'm hoping we'll be able to get enough produce out of that garden next school year so that we can, um, start utilizing that produce at our, at our elementary levels. Um, the next thing is less single-use plastic. Um, now, a lot of the containers that we use in food service, there's some food safety reasons for using those products. Um, but right now what I'm doing is I'm doing a cost comparison between some more paper compostable products, um, and comparing it to what we can currently use to see where we can, we can make a switch. Um, I'm also looking to increase, um, self-serve, and I'm looking to do this more at the high school level. Um, and this would, if we could get this going, we could eliminate, uh, the use of, of certain paper products and plastic products altogether. Um, and lastly, um, I'd like to start using real plates at the nine through twelve grade level. Um, this would not only help us save money on, on paper products, but it gets high schoolers away from that, um, school lunch, five compartment tray feel, um, and more into, uh, you know, a university-level dining experience. Um, that's going to take a little time to execute because there's a labor piece that I need to figure out with the real plates, but it's something I'm definitely striving to do, um, at the high school level. Uh, harvest of the month, this is something we started last year, and we've continued into this school year. Um, this is a farm-to-school initiative that promotes different locally grown and locally made, um, products. Um, and we feature those on the school, on the school menu. Um, and the goal is really to introduce students to, to new foods, encourage them to try new things, um, and increase their access and consumption of, of fruits and vegetables, um, and teach them a little something about their food system. Um, this month, we are featuring local maple syrup. That's our highlight this month. Um, I will say that in December, we featured an, uh, a kale-apple salad that was actually a hit with staff and students. So that was a, that was a big win. So that was pretty cool. And these are just some pictures from the harvest of the month. So there's that apple kale salad that the kids actually liked. Um, here's some students. Um, I think it's over at Slingerlands. We like to hand out, you know, coloring sheets or activity sheets to the students just so they have something to do during lunch, but it's also just a little extra to teach them about, um, the harvest of the month. Um, and then the last picture, this is, uh, students, uh, shucking corn. So in September, we had a whole bunch of local corn come in. We needed some help in the kitchens getting that prepped. Um, so we got all of our, the students in our schools involved with, um, helping us get that prepared for the kitchen. So that was fun, and it was, um, pretty cool. Uh, menu diversity is a, is a big one for me as well, so I'm really trying to provide options to accommodate more students and get more students, um, you know, into our cafeterias and eating. Um, a big one I've heard from students is more vegetarian options. Um, so I'm really trying to expand our daily options, um, more so at the high school. So right now, we offer, you know, like a vegetarian wrap. We have some sort of garden salad, um, fruit and yogurt parfaits, hummus bistro boxes. Um, at the lower levels, we're doing, um, you know, hummus and chip kits, PB and J, things like that, um, just so we can get more options on the menu for the students. Um, I also took it, a, a deep dive into looking how we could get halal foods, um, into our schools. Um, Jody, John and I actually met with a community member to see, just, just to see what it would take to, um, certify our, our kitchens as halal. Um, we, I'm also looking at a local company that, um, makes individually packed, um, halal items. Uh, we actually did a taste test at our high school recently and got really good feedback from these products. Um, so this is something that I, I really want to do, but I want to do it the right way, and I want to do it responsibly. So, um, the, the halal piece, I'm looking to implement next school year. Um, but I, uh, again, I just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. Um, I also partnered with Alana for Black History Month. Uh, they provided us with some really great recipes that we featured on the high school menu. Um, so we did things like, uh, scratch Jamaican rice and peas. Um, we did collard greens. Um, so that was, that was a, a cool thing that we did in the month of February. Um, and then currently something we're doing, and this is new for the school year, um, is we are offering take-home meals to students that observe Ramadan that may be fasting during the school day. Um, I've gotten a lot of good feedback from, from parents, from community members on this initiative, so this is definitely something I want to carry over year to year. Uh, so reaching more students, this was a big goal for me this year because when I started last year, something I noticed was that, um, a lot of parents didn't know a lot about our food service program, uh, specifically, uh, breakfast. A lot of parents didn't even know that our, our schools served breakfast. Um, so I have been working with communications to get more information out, uh, through Parent Square. Um, and one of the things that we did this school year is we are sending out a breakfast flyer monthly, um, which just highlights, uh, you know, a fact about breakfast, why it's important, um, and just reminding families that we offer, uh, breakfast at all of our schools. Um, and I've seen a nice increase in our breakfast meal counts, which you'll see in the next slide when we look at, um, average daily participation. Um, but I, I think, you know, getting that communicate, communication out, out has really helped. Um, another thing we did this school year is we, I started offering grab-and-go meals, um, during elementary half-days. Um, and I just thought this was important because I wanted to make sure that those students that rely on school lunch had, had a meal to go home with. Um, and then something we're working on right now is a mobile breakfast cart at the high school. Um, so something I noticed was that a lot of students come in down by the lower gym. Um, and, you know, they probably don't have enough time to get all the way down to the cafeteria to get breakfast. So we are working on setting up a mobile breakfast cart, um, down in that general area so that students have, um, a more accessible spot to get coffee, to get, um, to get breakfast as they're on their way to homeroom and entering the building. So, um, these graphs are showing, uh, the average percent of, percentage of students that participate, um, in the meal program each month. Um, so as you can see, we've seen a nice increase in, in breakfast over the last couple years. Um, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, on average, we were serving about four percent of the student population daily. Um, this current school year, on average, we're serving about seven and a half percent. So, you know, we're, we're seeing a nice increase year to year. I think, you know, between getting more communication out about, about breakfast, um, having more, more to offer on our menu, um, I think more students are willing to participate, um, in the breakfast program. Um, for lunch, we're seeing more of a gradual increase in participation. Um, it's very similar, uh, compared to last year. We do have some dips in participation this year just because we had less serving days, um, during some of the months this school year. Um, but on average, we're serving about thirty-nine and a half percent of the, the student population on a daily basis. So, um, jumping to what the twenty-five, twenty-six school year will look like. Um, right now, it's, it's unclear what the, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year will look like for food service. Um, as you all know, an executive proposal is out for free school meals for all students in New York State. Um, this would bring a lot of great benefits to our program if it passes. Um, it would eliminate stigma. It would address food insecurity, improve- It would eliminate stigma, it would address food insecurity, improve academic performance, eliminate unpaid meal debt. And obviously, we would see more students participating in our meal program, which would mean more money back into the program. But like I said, there's a lot of things that are in question and still unclear right now, like will this pass in our state budget? What will the reimbursements look like and the funding for the program? We've already seen recent cuts to school meal programs. The USDA recently cut the local food for schools program. That's the funding I mentioned earlier, the $35,000 that we got to spend on local foods. That program, right now, is no longer. And we also are seeing an end to supply chain assistance funds. This was COVID-era funding that we've been getting over the last three years that we will no longer be getting for our program. So for the 2525 school year, the program's projected revenue is just over 1.9 million. In the 2122 school year, all meals were free, resulting in more participation and more revenue back into the program. With the conclusion of free meals in 2223, you can see a decrease in revenue. But that appears to be leveling out a bit with a projected $183,000 increase in revenue over last year. It's also important to point out that we did get roughly $51,000 in BOSI's aid. This current aid is for a partial year, so we should be expecting to see an increase in this aid next year. For the 2025 school year, the program's projected expenditures is just under $2 million with notable increases in benefits and salaries. And this is associated with the collective bargaining agreement that was approved last year. Overall, our food costs are projected to be down. With that being said, we all know that food costs are high right now. I'm sure we all feel it when we're at the grocery store. And there's a lot of global and national issues that are still impacting our food system. Within the National School Lunch Program, we operate under what's called the Buy American provision, which means we have to buy domestic as much as possible. Right now, it's unclear how things like the recent tariffs are going to affect our food costs and our purchasing going forward. So looking at revenues over expenditures, we're looking at a projected loss of $118,000 for the current school year. When the beginning fund balance of $41,000 is applied, this results in an approximate $77,000 general fund subsidy to make the program whole. As you can see, with the conclusion of free school meals in the 2122 school year, it's been difficult to match or exceed our revenues against our expenditures. This is due to increasing labor and food costs that is not being offset by other revenue streams. So as mentioned earlier, it's uncertain whether universal free meals will pass in the state budget. So our projected revenues for next school year are based off of our school meal program remaining as-is and paid meals returning. We see a slight increase in revenue over our current projections for the current school year. I also want to point out the state and federal funding. There is a decrease from this year to next, and this is due to the funding cuts to that local food for schools program, which I said we got about $35,000, and the end of the supply chain assistance funds, which we've received about $250,000 over the last three years. As mentioned earlier, we will see an increase in the BOSI's state aid, which will be helpful for our program. I am anticipating an increase in expenditures for the 2526 school year, notably in salaries and benefits. I just want to point out the equipment line. So I have been working with operations and maintenance to put together an equipment list with install dates, and the goal here is to start an equipment replacement plan with the idea to be more proactive about replacing our aging equipment versus waiting for it to fail. And that accounts for the $60,000 that we've budgeted again for the 2526 school year. So in summary, as you can see, our fund balance is decreasing year to year. Between the rising costs of food and labor, it's been difficult for our revenues to catch up to our expenditures. If we continue this way, we are projecting a loss of $248,000 in the 2526 school year. Again, I want to point out that these are projections based on the notion that we will continue the way we are right now. If universal free meals comes to fruition, these projections are going to look a lot different. Right now, we're still waiting on a lot of information. Like I said, on one hand, universal free meals is still in the state budget, and we're waiting for that to pass. But as you've probably seen, on the federal side, they're proposing a lot of drastic changes to the school meal programs, which could really change how we operate. So right now, we can only focus on the information that we have. So with the idea that our meal program will remain the same, I have the following recommendations to combat the projected loss. So we will reevaluate meal pricing. Breakfast meal pricing has not been adjusted in quite some time, and an adjustment may be necessary. You may recall from my previous presentations, every year, I have to fill out what's called the Paid Lunch Equity Tool. And this helps the district determine if their paid student lunch price is sufficient to cover the cost of that meal. So once that tool is available, I will fill that out and reevaluate lunch pricing. With that being said, I know that we recently increased lunch pricing in January, and I want to make sure that the paid student lunch price remains affordable for our community. I will also look at evaluating and scaling back some of our menu offerings to reduce food costs. And I just want to say, you know, I would look at this from more of a less-is-more perspective. I have a really amazing group of staff, a really creative group of staff that could, you know, I have one person that could literally make cardboard taste good if I gave her a piece of cardboard. So I'm confident that even if we do reduce some of our options, we could do a really great job at what we're offering. As I mentioned before, labor costs are high, so as staff retire and positions open up, I will reevaluate ours and our staffing needs. Catering is something I've been looking at expanding, and this could generate more revenue for our department. And lastly, I'll explore different ways that we can do start à la carte sales in different ways. Any questions?
Thank you, that was great. And all the photos that are in the presentation are actual meals.
That's from our kitchens, yep.
You mentioned early in the presentation that you're composting food waste. The compost, is that used, how are you using the compost?
So all of the kitchens have compost bins, so all of the scraps that are produced when we are prepping food gets put in those compost bins, and it's being picked up by the Compost 360, which comes to all of our schools to pick up the compost bins, yep.
So you mentioned an idea for self-serve in the high school. Logistically, how does that work?
So right now, it probably, I'm thinking more, so we have like a fresh fruit and vegetable line at the high school, and right now, we cup everything up in plastic cups, and that's something I really want to get away from. And I think at the high school level, high schoolers could serve themselves, things like, you know, the fruit and vegetables. So I want to get away from that piece. The hot meal would probably still be served to the student, but anywhere on the line where we can get away from cupping things up and using more of those single-use plastics, I'd like to get away from that, yep.
And then the breakfast service, especially, my kid sometimes buys breakfast, but I always wonder logistically, like, how does that work? Do they sit in the cafeteria and eat the breakfast?
At the elementary schools, I'm sorry, it's grabbing though. Yep, so it differs at each school. So some kids get right off the bus, go to the cafeteria, pick up breakfast and go to their classroom. Some go to their classroom first and come down, get breakfast and go back.
And I had one last question. In your comparative revenue slide, actual 2023 à la carte and snacks was over $900,000, which seems drastically different from some of the other years. Do you know what happened there?
Yeah, so that particular year, they combined lunch and breakfast and à la carte into one line.
Okay.
So that has lunch and breakfast revenue included in the, à la carte and breakfast and lunch are combined, yep, into one line.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I also want to share my thanks. I love the very clear passion that you bring to this and making sure that we've got a really vibrant food service program that is part of the community and that goes to meet the community rather than just doing what needs to be done. I think that food and nourishing our students is at the core of some of what we do, especially for students who get a lot of their meals at school, which is a lot of our students. So thank you so much for making sure that we've got really thoughtful and, you know, engaging ways for students to come into our food service program. So thank you, thank you. A couple of things that I just want to lift up. First of all, when you're talking about the potentially doing a breakfast cart at the high school, you couldn't see the high schoolers assembled behind you, but I saw a lot of head nodding. So we've got a focus group here that seemed interested. Seems like that could definitely be an idea worth pursuing. Just to, again, going back to those community connections, making sure that we're offering take-home meals at Ramadan, great initiative. Heard a lot of community support and response for that as well that I wanted to share here, so thank you. And all of the initiatives that you're talking about to reduce our carbon footprint, get plastic out of, you know, off our students' plates is, I think, definitely the way to go. So thank you so much, and just keep doing great work and let us know how we can support.
Thank you.
I just have one question on the comparative expenditures. The uniforms postage and point-of-sale fees, that's every year gone down. What can you attribute that to?
Let me just take a peek here. Is this the slide that you're looking at?
Yes.
Yep. Let's see.
It's great, I'm just wondering why.
I want to say, and John, you may have to...
It's the application that was included in the BOSI's...
It was the point-of-sale fees, correct? Yeah.
Hardware lasts a long time, but it costs a lot more than it lasts.
Gotcha.
So the annualized application cost is built into the BOSI's contract that Claire is part of? And then we get BOSI's aid on the backend of that.
Understood, okay, thank you.
One last question.
Yeah.
I know that we've been talking over the last couple of years about working to be able to apply for and get increased incentives for local food sales for breakfast as well as lunch. I know that there's a big administrative...
There's a big push for that, yeah.
What's that?
There's a big push for that, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I know there's a big administrative piece, and I know it's something that you were, when we talked about it last year, you were trying to figure out if there were ways to kind of untangle the accounting so that we could apply for and hopefully receive those additional incentives. And I was just wondering, any headway there? Or is that something that might be available for our district?
I know there was a big push to start including breakfast in that 30%. I don't have any more information on where we are with that. I'm hoping that will happen because right now, like you said, there's a lot of administrative work in the back, and you have to separate, you have to back out anything you spent on breakfast, which it's a lot of work. This school year, it's not something I looked at just because we did have that local food for schools grant money that I needed to spend within a certain period of time. But it is something that I'd like to look at to see if it's something that would be worth it for our district. But in terms of breakfast being included, I don't have any information on that right now, but I know there's a push.
Got it, and I'm sorry, I conflated the two things when we were talking. We were talking about trying to get the lunch incentives, and to do that, we'd have to separate the breakfast.
Yeah, they don't include breakfast in that, yep.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. My last question, you mentioned the local partnerships with the various farms. I think it's at Argyle Cheese and perhaps... I know that we have Cornell in as part of the Health Foods Program to talk about different things. I'm wondering, has there been an opportunity or would we want to think about an opportunity to bring some of the local partners from Ag in our region in as well? Like some of the places that the food is in fact coming from, you know, we're eating cheese from here today or whatever. So just something to consider. I'm sure there's a lot of reasons why that would or would not work, but I just thought it'd be cool.
Yeah, it would be.
To piggyback off of that question from Catherine, you mentioned, you know, that we are trying to use more of local businesses, and also, we do the Harvest of the Month. We bring in businesses to talk about those types of things. But then you also said that the USDA just cut the local food for schools program?
Yes.
So is that going to impact our ability to do the Harvest of the Month or to bring in these local food from local businesses?
I don't see it impacting the Harvest of the Month. So our produce distributor is out of Florida, New York, and a lot of the produce that we feature for the Harvest of the Month is, they're growing and it's coming right from there. So a lot of the Harvest of the Month stuff we're getting from our produce distributor. As far as the local food for schools grant, a lot of the products that we brought in are more expensive. So that's something, it may be more difficult without that grant funding to have those items on the menu all the time like we did this year. But it's definitely something, you know, I'll look into and try to work out, but I don't think we're going to see it as much as we did this year.
And I just appreciate you creating this budget in uncertain times. I mean, there is a lot that you don't know, so I do appreciate that. And if, over the next few months, it determines there's major changes to the USDA's requirements or reimbursements, if that is something that you need to come back
Yeah.
to us and tell us that you need a major revamping of your budget, please do so. We understand that there are these factors that we just don't know yet.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next presentation is by John McPhillips. Just a budget presentation overview and discussion.
Unfortunately, I won't be here talking about food or snacks, so... We're wrapping up our budget presentation here, folks. It's March 19th, we have one additional meeting, April 2nd, two weeks from now, where the board will consider various ballot options and for buses, capital reserves and the operating budget. But before we get there, I wanted to sort of regroup for both the board and the public at large to see where we were, where we are, and where we're going for the 2526 budget process. We started our budget process back in February of 2025. At the original meeting, we presented a baseline budget of roughly $117.5 million, offset with revenue of $111.2 million, which left an initial gap of $6.3 million. That, at that point in time, translated into a large tax levy increase. But over the course of not only that meeting, but several other meetings, we've presented to the board for its consideration various additions and reductions in various program areas. In the administrative section, there is a proposed increase of $40,500 for the Human Resources Department associated with the digitization of employee records. That's the second phase of a two-phase process. We also added roughly $3.5 million in revenue associated with the GB2 pilot, which was an extension agreed to between GB2 and the Bethlehem IDA on February 26th. That is a one-year extension. There is ongoing negotiations between the IDA and the entity as it considers a potential pilot moving forward. As information comes available over the course of the next several months, I will share that with the board and the public. With regard to transportation, Ellen Dorado, the Director of Transportation, proposed the elimination of five drivers and three attendants. All those positions are vacancies. That roughly translates to $490,000 in reduced expenditures. In technology, the Chief Technology Officer recommended a reduction of a data web architect who will be retiring later this year, I'm sorry, the beginning part of 2526. Reduction of a purchasing agreement with BOSI's that had expired at roughly $175,000 and a reduction of roughly $10,000 in a library application. Operations and maintenance, Nick Consoliar, Director of Facilities, recommended a $34,000 reduction, which, that's a net reduction. It included a $5,000 increase associated with the green teams initiatives for, associated with the gardens throughout the district. A decrease of a senior account clerk who is retiring with the replacement of an account clerk one. So that, those three changes in the budget resulted in a $34,000 decrease. In athletics, there was a small request of roughly $2,900 associated with an ergonomic table. On the instructional side, Dr. Hurst, last meeting, presented several additions and reductions. On the addition side, there was the $50,000 increase associated with the bookworms initiative. That's the final implementation phase. There was a $5,000 increase for a supplemental allocation for arts and education, a $38,000 increase for BOSI's library services and various stipends for clubs and activities that have been presented to the district for consideration. On the reduction side, there was the proposed elimination of two vacancies in the elementary schools at roughly a $207,000 decrease. And the reduction of a BOSI's library coordinator at $10,000 gets you a net decrease for the instructional program of roughly $480,000.
After tonight.
Okay. Dr. Hurst will come back and provide some additional information with regard to the instructional programs. On student support services, there was the Director of SES, Doug Marcy, presented an elimination of a vacant social worker, speech therapist and a clinical assistant for roughly $272,000. All taken together, the gap now stands at roughly $1.3 million or 2.3%. Oh, I forgot these slides were in here. I got it went through here instead of memorizing them.
So I just want to run through a few slides. John had raised a question at the last meeting regarding home instruction because the numbers were different on two of the slides. So I was able to confirm that the one slide contained three lines, which is why it was substantially higher than the other one. So that clarifies that.
Thank you.
On the other piece, so last time, again, I recommended some reductions and I had said that we're still in the process of high school scheduling and some of our elementary enrollment numbers were still sort of being finalized. So I did tell you last time that I'd be coming back tonight to propose additional reductions based on high school scheduling and sort of where we are comfortably with our elementary enrollment at this point. Again, all of these reductions are done through retirements and they're all based on enrollment and course requests. So I did leave off one of the stipends from last time. We replaced this club with another one, but I forgot to put the, this one on there last time. So we are proposing three reductions at the high school, social studies teacher, English teacher and .5 physics. Again, all due to retirements. And then elementary teacher, an additional section due to retirements. So last time, the number was like in the $200,000 range and now it is $217,000, you can see from our last meeting. These additional $363,000 brings the total to $480,000, which was on the previous slide
So with all the reductions and additions, this is a summary slide of where the 2526 budget currently stands. I want to highlight on this slide two, a couple of additional changes that I am recommending the board for consideration. The first of which is an increase of $475,000 of the district's capital reserve. That is actually offset further down on the slide on the revenue, associated with $475,000 in state building aid. When we first were putting together our 2425 budget, the capital project was still open. We were securing final costs, what our actual debt service would be. An associated building aid, this $475,000 actually represents the state reimbursement associated with the capital reserve dollars that we had used. I'm just suggesting to the board that for that state aid that's coming in, we replenish the, the capital reserves to the, to the same effect. A $210,000 increase in the transfer to the food service budget. The original budget presented back in February assumed a $40,000 transfer from the general fund to the food service fund. Given Claire Grin's presentation this evening, she's forecasting, as things currently stand, roughly a $250,000 general fund subsidy. This line item provides that additional funding to ensure that, at least from a budget perspective, the food service or C fund is made and kept whole. To balance the 2526 budget and to make sure that the tax levy increase is in line with the tax cap law, we can only increase the tax levy by $820,000 or 1.12%. The gap is larger than that. In order to, to balance the budget, I'm proposing to the board, consider the use of approximately $715,000 of the district's undesignated fund balance. This $715,000 fills the gap, which is a structural gap for 2526. I'm comfortable proposing fund balance for, for a number of reasons. First and foremost, and the largest of which, in 2425, the district received roughly $610,000 in unanticipated, unforecasted revenue associated with the PSEG pilot. At the time the pilot was put together, the pilot schedule was what was budgeted. Within the agreement with PSEG, if that entity reaches certain production thresholds in terms of energy output over a two-year period, it requires PSEG to pay taxing jurisdictions a sweetener or a bonus payment. We were not aware that PSEG was in that position. Over the life of the 20-year term with PSEG, that threshold had never been met. So it was met over the past couple of PSEG's fiscal years, which triggered, at least for the district, roughly $610,000 in additional revenue. Given that that was unanticipated revenue, most of that $715,000 use of fund balance is attributed directly to the, the additional PSEG pilot revenue. The tail of the tape in terms of the expenditures, a comparison of where the 2425 budget was, where our baseline budget for 2526 started and where we ultimately ended. In total, we're anticipating an increase of roughly $2.6 million between 2425 and 2526 or a 2.27% increase in expenditures. A large component of that, you can see, is between, you know, the first column and the third column is tied to salaries, which are governed by collective bargaining agreements, salary and fringe benefits. I've talked at length in terms of the pressure the district is feeling, particularly on hospital medical insurance, more particularly on pharmaceutical coverage. Those anticipated costs are included in that $30.9 million for fringe benefits, along with a not insignificant increase for the ERS retirement, the employee retirement system for our non-instructional staff. Do you want to highlight a decrease in debt service from 10.6 to 9.2 million? That was a strategic decision the district implemented in 2425, understanding where we were going to be with debt service for 2526 and the associated reimbursement with building aid. The other areas of the budget remain relatively flat. You will see an increase in the transfers and capital outlay. Capital outlay is roughly $100,000, so I'll get to that in a later slide. But the real increase from the 415 to the 1.1 is associated with the $457,000 in increased building aid and the additional funding needed for food service to make itself whole. Overall, the adjusted budget is $116.6 million that will be presented to the public if the board so chooses. Same information distributed a different way based on the programmatic area, same total. The, the increases that we would be seeing on the previous slide are more equally distributed amongst the various program and instructional areas, taking in consideration the additions and reductions that were proposed and articulated earlier in the presentation. On the revenue side, a couple of points to highlight here. As much detail as we can go in terms of the expenditure side, the district's revenue is somewhat limited. There's roughly four or five main pots of funding that the district has to offset expenditures, school taxes, pilot payments, state aid, various other revenue. The $73.9 million in 2526 assumes an $820,000 increase, which is that 1.12% maximum allowable tax increase based on the tax cap law. The pilot payment assumes the 3.6 based on the, the extension. State aid shows a, a small increase. You may recall from earlier presentations that the executive budget proposal included a 2% increase in foundation aid. That is reflected in the budget as well. A more deeper dive on the state aid. Foundation aid at roughly 19.6. BOSI's in special education, small increase. Transportation, again, a, you know, an increase but not, not sizable. And, and building aid. The building aid, you'll see that $475,000 increase that we referenced earlier. Overall, the increase in state aid is $1.2 million or roughly 3.7%. Do you want to highlight that the state aid, the figures in the state aid chart do not include the universal pre-K allocation to the district at roughly $1.1269,000? The district is not immune to the inflationary pressures that we are experiencing at, at home. And what I want to highlight here is that over the course of time between 2012 and 2021, where the district could increase taxes by roughly 2% under the tax cap law, we sort of mirrored that based on what the inflation was at the time. Until we get to 2021, where because of the pandemic and supply chain issues and other factors at both the local, national and global economies, resulted in significant year-over-year-over-year increases. You can see over the last four years, inflation actually increased 4.7%, 8%, 4.1% and 3%, which compounds to roughly a 21% increase in goods and services over a four-year period. However, under the tax cap law, you're only allowed to increase taxes by approximately 2%, which compounds only an 8.2% increase over the same four-year period. This graph illustrates that that yellow shaded area is the inflation that the district had to absorb over the course of those four years between various methods, either maximizing revenue or decreasing costs or thinking outside the box in terms of how to deliver goods and services at a, at a lower, cheaper cost to remain as close as it could to what the inflation was. This is a side-by-side comparison of the tax levy in terms of what was allowable for the tax levy, what the board ultimately levied in terms of taxes, as well as the amount of allowable tax levy that was not levied. So in essence, in 2324, the district could have increased taxes by roughly $543,000 more than it did. Didn't need the taxes at that point in time. It provided some tax relief to, to residences and commercial entities within the district. Same thing for 2425, $634,000 was left on the table, so to speak, in terms of untaxed authority, resulting in roughly $1.2 million over the course of the two years. In 2526, given the pressures that we're feeling both on the revenue and an expenditure side, the allowable increase is $820,000 or 1.12%. We're recommending to the board that that's within reason. It's the, we're not seeking an override of the tax cap. We'll deal with the $820,000 in terms of increase in taxes, backfilling any additional need with the undesignated fund balance. In terms of what that tax levy increase may be to folks in both the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland, I can provide a little bit of information. This is always an uncomfortable component of the presentation because there's still a lot of information I do not have access to, given the timing of where we're at with budget compared to the real property tax calendar. Tax rates in particular are influenced by the assessed value in and between both the towns of Bethlehem and New Scotland. They're also impacted by equalization rates. Quick summary in terms of the calendar challenge, in terms of forecasting what the impact to tax rates are in March. The equalization rates are available in February of 2025. The district's taxable status date is March 1st, which is all applications for exemptions or changes in assessed value need to be to the town assessors by no later than March 1st. The preliminary assessment rule is not available to the public until the earliest May 1st. So it's very challenging for me to forecast what the actual impact will be to tax rates. And the final assessment rule is not due and available until July 1st. So the information I'm going to be presenting to you today is the information I do have available for 2526, along with the assessment role, the final assessment role for 2425. It's not the best gauge, but it's the most accurate gauge I can give you at this juncture in time. The comparison of equalization rates between the town in Bethlehem and New Scotland, for Bethlehem at 64% and New Scotland at 65%, you can see it was previously 75 and 74%. What does that mean and what does that translate to? In essence, it's showing that Bethlehem's assessed value is roughly 64% of what the market value of any residence or commercial business is, 65% for New Scotland. The final tax rate for 2024 for Bethlehem was $22.27, for New Scotland was $22.59. Because of the change in the equalization rates, the decrease, as well as the fact that the decrease was not as great for New Scotland as Bethlehem, it translates into sort of a difference in the percentage increase or decrease between the towns. Bethlehem would see a 1.35% increase in its tax rate. New Scotland would experience roughly a 1.64% tax rate decrease. It does not translate to that, the town of Bethlehem is going to be paying more taxes compared to their friends and family in New Scotland. This all works out to make sure that the assessed value for our home, whether it's in New Scotland or Bethlehem... in New Scotland or Bethlehem, will pay the same amount of taxes at the end of the process. But from a tax bill perspective, Bethlehem would see roughly a $30 increase per $100,000 of assessed value, and New Scotland would see a $37 decrease per $100,000 of assessed value. Again, when we get later in the process, when we set the tax rates in late August, or at least late August in that August meeting, these numbers will change, only because I will have updated assessment values for both towns when the final assessment rule is available. But I do want to give a sense to both the board and the public what a 1% tax increase on levy translates to in terms of a tax rate increase or decrease between the towns. I always try to take some time to highlight the district's savings accounts, its financial stewardship of making sure that it is maximizing opportunities to save money for specific purposes. This is a listing of all the fund balance and reserve dollars for the district. A lot of these reserves in particular are earmarked for specific and specific causes only. The funding is not necessarily transferable between reserves. Workers' comp, we have $780,000, which will be used to offset workers' comp claims or incurred losses that are outside of the operating budget. That $780,000 is based on a five-year average of claims paid by the district employee benefits. That's roughly at $3.3 million and represents the dollar value of the accrual value for all employees and recommended by auditors. Your tax cert reserve is $500,000. That's based on the present filings for residences and commercial businesses that are appealing what their current assessed value is. So we want to make sure that we put some money aside for those tax cert filings in case a judge rules in favor of the residents and the entity, and the district would have to pay back tax dollars to those residences and commercial businesses. On the retirement, we have roughly $6 million between both the employer retirement system and the teacher retirement system to offset what can sometimes happen, large market swings in Wall Street can translate into large operational expenditure increases for the district. This reserve would be able to be used to flatten those large increases. Several capital reserves are 2015 and 2019 capital reserves, as at the end of fiscal year 2324 had been exhausted, most associated with the 21 capital project, as well as the middle school auditorium project. The 22 capital reserve presently has $14.3 million in available funding for future capital projects. We have a debt reserve at $1.6 million that can be used to offset future debt service for district needs. In May 2024, voters approved the establishment of a bus reserve that can be used for future vehicle acquisitions and associated transportation requirements and needs. And the undesignated fund balance as of June 2024 was roughly $4.5 million. Under real property tax law, a school district's undesignated fund balance can be no more than 4% of its operating budget, and the district is right at that level in compliance with real property tax law. Overall, $31.5 million in various savings accounts that the district could use. These are more or less your rainy day funds should things take an unexpected turn for the worse financially. I want to highlight particularly the capital reserves. Again, as I noted, the 15 and 19 capital reserves have been exhausted for various capital projects. We use them for the intended purpose. Both those reserves had a $10 million maximum funding limit. We had, the district had funded those over the course of various budget cycles to $10 million, but we had used all the funding. In 2020, the 2022 capital reserve was a $20 million capital reserve. As of June 30th, 2024, the district had funded up to $17.2 million. The available funding in that reserve is at $14.3 million. You may recall that we pulled some money out of the 22 capital reserve to offset the middle school auditorium project. That entire project was paid with cash. We did not incur any debt service. But I do want to highlight that the funding limit left in the 22 capital reserve is roughly $2.8 million. We cannot exceed that $20 million threshold, and I anticipate that we'll meet that max as we close out our 2425 fiscal year, and we'll propose a solution to that in a moment. Again, a chart summarizing how the real property tax law is associated with the undesignated fund balance. The undesignated fund balance presently is $4.5 million. Of that $4.5 million, I'm going to be pulling out roughly $715,000 to balance the 2526 budget. Do you want to highlight that the maximum threshold forecasted for June 2025 is roughly $4,664,000? Again, that's 4% based on the $116 million operating budget proposed. It's always good to provide both the board and the public in terms of a multi-year projection in terms of where we will stand in both in terms of revenue and expenditures. I'll start with the revenues first. We're making some assumptions here in terms of school taxes will increase by roughly 2% over the course of the next three years. I'm assuming the pilot payments will remain flat at roughly 3.6. I'm only assuming that only because I know that there's active negotiations between the Bethlehem IDA and the GB2 power company, that any agreement should once surface, that pilot payment may be less, it may be more, it may be structured in such a fashion that it impacts these estimates. I'm just putting that as a placeholder right now. Again, as additional information becomes available publicly from the IDA, I'll be happy to share that in terms of where the pilot payments may stack out for the future. State aid is assumed at a 2% increase per year. Again, state aid is somewhat variable based on factors outside of the district's control. We're not sure. State aid may be increased or decreased based on changes in the state aid formula, other issues impacting state in general. We talked earlier about concerns about loss in federal aid at not only the district level, but at the state level and what that may translate into state aid moving forward. All other revenue roughly flat at $3.8 million. In order to balance the budget over the course of the next few years, we will continue to need additional funds from our fund balance. We talked about roughly $715,000 for 2526. I'm anticipating, based on these estimates, a use of $1.4 million in fund balance in 2627, and it increases by roughly $500,000 to $600,000 for the next few years, resulting in the revenue totals that you see there. A visual image of what the chart translates to in terms of a graph. The additional taxes of a 2% increase are reflected in the pink color, and then the use of fund balance to balance the budget in the purple color. As I stressed earlier, the $715,000 that we're building into 2526 is a structural deficit, and absent some changes moving forward, additional management of 2526 and future budgets, we want to try to limit or decrease the structural balance moving forward. The, for the projection side, on the expenditure side, roughly a 3% increase in salaries of instructional and non-instructional staff in accordance with collective bargaining agreements, fringe benefits. This may be a little rich, I'll admit to that, but I kept my calculations more conservative only because of the increases that we're seeing in fringe benefits in general. I didn't want to necessarily short that line, given some of the pressures we're experiencing. And some nominal increases in supplies and purchase services. The debt service is pretty much a given. I'm able to, at least in terms of the current debt schedule for existing issuances, I'm able to forecast that out pretty well. So there are some nominal increases, which I really attributed to bus purchases that the board may consider moving forward. Transfers moving forward gets you to the total dollar value figure that you see here, and those dollars match both appropriation and revenue. Same sort of visual presentation on the chart side in terms of how the various appropriation categories stack up, both individually and in total. The district is allowed a $100,000 allocation for capital outlay. Every year, we look in assistance with Nick and Sonia, our director of facilities, provides a recommendation in terms of what that $100,000 capital outlay can be used for. Over the past several years, we've been updating our security systems at various buildings and hardening the exterior of our buildings. Two years ago, we did the high school. This year, we're just closing down the middle school door contact system by Avalon. We are now branching for 2526 and future years, the same security measures for our elementary schools. Nick's recommendation was to start with Hammergrill, only because it's a more rural section of the district, surrounded by some wooded areas along the perimeter. We anticipate that between the actual equipment, hardware, software, and engineering and design fees, that should be well within the $100,000 maximum capital outlay. Future years, Hammergrill and Gladmont are the more expensive of the elementary schools, just given their design and the number of doors they have. As we get into future budgets, you know, we'll consider which schools can be accommodated within a $100,000 outlay, with the goal of the next, you know, three years or so, all of the elementary schools will be able to be fully secure in terms of the perimeter. Ballot propositions outside of the operating budget that the board will consider during the April 2nd meeting, there are two propositions that will also be included on the ballot. First of which is the bus proposition. We talked at length over the past few meetings in terms of what the district should be presenting to voters. At the last meeting, the board recommended to bond council to pull a proposition for three large diesel buses and three small gasoline power buses not to exceed a total cost of $814,770. That's the language that will be presented to the public on May 20th, as well as the establishment of a capital reserve. We talked earlier in terms of how the 22 capital reserve was closely meeting its funding threshold of $20 million. This is the establishment of a $30 million capital reserve. Again, this is just a, the establishment of an additional savings account for future capital project needs to help minimize the issuance of debt and principal and interest costs that negatively impact the operating budget moving forward. Overall, the ballot will consist of the following: the district operating budget, the bus proposition, the 2025 capital reserve, along with the Bethlehem Public Library's operating budget, two open district board of education seats, and two library board of trustee seats. In particular, with regard to the board of education, there are two open seats. Robert Teigen and John Walston are the current occupants of those seats. It's for a three-year term, expiring June 30th, 2028. Sorry, June 30th, 2028. Petitions first became available February 20th and are due to the district clerk Brittany Barrett no later than April 21st at 5:00 PM. The remaining schedule for our budget process, again, April 2nd, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, the board will consider for adoption, the ballot propositions highlighted above. May 7th is the public hearing on the proposed budget. May 14th is the meet the candidates night, and ultimately, May 20th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, is the district vote. That's all I have tonight.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Starting with possibly the easier one first, the meet the candidates, is that going to be on Zoom or in person this year? Do we know that yet?
I don't know. We only have told that if there's more than...
Got it. Right.
People running for the seats.
Right.
They've done it. The lead woman voters have requested to do it via Zoom the last couple of years. I don't know if they'll continue that or not.
I was just, just curious. It's one of those things, just getting the word out as soon as we do know, but it makes sense that we would know that yet. So, sorry about that. Thank you. Just about the, so using the fund reserves rather than attempting to go over the tax cap, can we talk about that for a couple of minutes?
Sure.
And just ask, I'd like to ask a couple of questions there. So if I understand, so that 117, excuse me, 117, the $715,000, sorry. That transfer this year, is that coming out of the, did you say that's coming out of the $4.5 million fund?
That's correct.
And...
If I, if I could just pause there for a second. It is coming out of the $4.5 million that's presently available.
Correct.
Keep in mind that there was $611,000 in additional revenue from the GB2 pilot that's immediately, because it was not anticipated, can be used to offset that.
Got it. Thank you.
But it's still a structural imbalance in the budget.
Correct, but it's not, it's not quite such the imbalance that it would be otherwise. It's a smaller imbalance because of that sweetener that we're getting.
Yes.
Okay. Then the, the projections, and is it a safe assumption? Sorry, I was like scrolling through the slides up and down here. We're projecting to continue to run a deficit for the out years, for the next several years? And those, if we were to cover those with fund balances, that would also come, that would be the same fund?
That's correct.
Correct? And is it a safe assumption that we're not, we're not projecting to continue to put money into that fund as we drop down?
Not the way, not the way the budget is structured, right? We only add to fund balance and reserves at the end of closeout, depending on where we may have expenditures, let's say, associated with vacancies that we did not fill, or revenues that exceeded expectations. So in terms of the budget presentation, there's not the anticipation to immediately add to reserves. We won't be in a position to make that determination until much later in the fiscal year as we're closing expenditures and revenues.
That makes, that makes sense. However, if as projected, even with the $600,000 coming in this year, we're continuing to build increasing deficits in the out years, if, could we go to the...
Yep.
Sorry, I don't know what number it is.
No, I know.
But I will find it here in a moment. Thinking of the slide that shows the out years.
Yep. So if I can anticipate your question, Catherine, is, over the course of those four years in that orange use of fund balance slide, we're using more fund balance than is available, assuming no additional increases to fund balance at the end of the year.
That's what I was driving at.
And that's the challenge when you use fund balance to address a structural deficit. You know, it's not, we're using fund balance to offset a one-time acquisition of a large piece of equipment.
Right.
But in conversations, given where we were on the tax levy limit of, you know, 1.1%, an override of a fraction of a percent or somewhere at one additional percent or somewhere less, the conversation internally was like, let's see if we can give some tax relief to our friends and family in the community, to, given the pressures that they're feeling at home presently, and see where 2526 ultimately winds up. And then we are constantly in the business office reevaluating and managing the budget. And that's a key component here. The budget process is really, it's like a 90-10 split. The 10% is in the development of the budget. I know there's been a lot of talk here, there's been a lot of work by all parties within the district, but a real lion's share of the work is coming to the management of the budget, once the books open on July 1st. Really evaluating where are we in terms of our revenue streams? Where are we with enrollment and FTEs? Where are we with posting of positions for vacancies? Do we really need those positions to be filled? Should we wait for, to gain some savings and maybe reevaluate on January 1st? So the process of managing the budget is really what allows the district to remain within the parameters of revenues and appropriation to make sure that we're not really, if we're, if we have to hit fund balance, that we're not hitting it as hard as we first forecasted it. Now, something may change outside of our collective knowledge or control that may require more fund... more fund balance use in one year or multiple years. This budget process has been a little bit more trickier than others for a number of reasons. A, the pilot agreement coming through while beneficial in some ways, minimize our levy increase from one year to the next, the federal impact that we're seeing in terms of tariffs and changes, as well as other federal funding, what that may translate to district specifically and/or the state generally, and how that may then translate to the district, those are all unknown. So I think if anything, the district will be, you know, keeping the pulse on this and reporting both to the board on a little bit more frequent timeline than usual, only because there's a lot more influx this process than there have been in previous ones.
I'm really grateful for that, and I think one of the things that I'm just trying to lift up here is that there's, there's going to come a point, you know, you can do more with less to a point, and then you're just doing less with less, right? And with the projected structural deficits and continuing to draw down fund reserves, that's something that would put us, in my opinion, would put us in a very, in a pretty untenable position, right? We have no, we have no room to breathe there if any unexpected happens. And as we think about, I hear, I absolutely hear what you're saying this year about the challenges of exceeding a tax cap or what that, you know, what that looks like if it's really worth trying to bring our friends and family and the community, you know, into that conversation. However, just like by having bus propositions every single year so that we can anticipate those costs, so that we can think about that as a community, as a necessary cost when we go to the polls, making sure that we can, to the extent possible, build in that predictability when it comes to just kind of general taxation in order to keep our services and mission delivery possible across the district, I think is also really important. So just wanted to kind of like underline that as we're, as we're considering what impacts the choices we make this year are going to have on the coming years as well.
And to flip it a little bit different, different way, Catherine, when we had not taxed up to the maximum taxable authority, because we didn't need it.
Of course, right.
I'm not suggesting we revisit that, but the way the legislation works, any money that's left on the table or wasn't taxed does not, cannot be sort of recouped in a later year.
Right.
So every tax cap process or any individual fiscal year, it's a, you know, start, start from, from the starting line and recalculate. So I think it's important to highlight that, at least in the two years that we talked about, we gave roughly $1.2 million back. It's even more when you look back over the past several budget cycles. So in a situation, if the board did choose to override, I think you need to at least compare the two, that while if an override was under consideration, where you were above the tax gap, you should look at it as well as the years that you were under.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, sort of following up on what was just discussed about the undesignated fund balance. What is that generally used for?
So it's your rainy day fund, right? So, you know, by law, if you adhere to the law, you can only maintain 4%. That's a relatively low threshold. School districts are held to a much different standard than your municipal organizations, whether it's fire districts, towns, or cities. I mean, you look at some of the counties, their fund balances approaching almost the value of their operating budget because they have so much more funding and flexibility to deal with. 4% is a tough number to remain in, only because any one or two things can markedly swing that $4 million in terms of use. There are proposals at the state level to increase that that have not gained traction. From an operating perspective, it does provide some cash liquidity when we are a little bit in our poorer months until state aid comes in or tax revenue comes in. So from an operating perspective, that's how we use it any given year, but it's really used as, hey, emergency break glass, let's use this to plug a hole that was unforeseen.
Sure, and then remind me how that gets filled back up? Where is it, where does that flow in from?
So any given year, as we do our closeout process, we look at our budgeted revenues compared to our actual revenues. Anything above and beyond that is surplus funding.
Exactly.
And the same thing on the expenditure side. We have our appropriation. If we spent less because the retirement bill was less, or we had, you know, 10 vacancies in the instructional staff, that funding would also go to either fund reserves or the fund balance.
And so that PSEG, you know, sort of gift, however we want to think about it, that would just generally ordinarily go into that--
That's correct.
--fund balance.
And that's why for this particular year, I was more comfortable using fund balance because I, all else being equal, that's, at least a majority of that would be offset by that pilot.
Given the, you know, given the, whatever was in there prior to that, would that have put us over the 4%?
The district may, does its best to remain in that 4%, which is why the capital reserves are so, so critical and why we, why I'm proposing the creation of an additional $30 million.
So in other words, if it was going to put us over--
I would move money to the capital reserve.
Then it would sort of over that bucket into a different bucket.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Catherine, you have another question?
No, I was just thinking though, like, but when we do, when we do that right, we lock up those dollars. Once that goes into the capital reserve fund, those are, those are very specified uses.
For, for the capital reserve, yes. Now, in terms of flexibility, the district can use certain ones, like the employee benefits one, and the retirement reserves in particular, to minimize sort of cost increases from one year to the next.
Right.
Again, I always caution in terms of using the reserve dollars, which are one-time-once money, with ongoing expenditures.
Yeah.
So we'll take the retirement reserve for example. If Wall Street had a terrible year that negatively impacted what our retirement bill would be, maybe we would use a retirement reserve in the hopes that next year, Wall Street would be a better year and the bill would come down.
Right.
That's, I would feel more comfortable in that situation using a limited resource for an ongoing need, and the same thing with employee benefits. But most of the other ones, under state rule and regulation, are specifically earmarked for a designated specific purpose.
Thanks, John.
Yep.
Next on the agenda, item five, recognition of a public comment on an agenda item. If anyone is here who'd like to speak on an agenda item, put this now as time to come to the microphone. Next, number six, action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next, item B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through eight.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through four.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I've got a question. The proposal to reduce the number of aid students with disabilities, so just on that topic there, can, can administration shine some light on this or the background here?
That was the one, those five positions that had been cut the prior year and never were actually abolished that we talked about at the last meeting. So that's, it's really a carryover from last year's budgeting process.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And those positions are just, are unfilled currently. They're not, they haven't been filled since that time.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through four.
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have any members of the public here who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now is time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 2, 2025, with anticipated executive session at 6:00, regular board meeting at 7:00. After that, the next meeting is April 23, 2025, with anticipated executive session at 6:00, regular board meeting at 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.
Okay, students need to sign.
Oh, yeah. Page students and super students, we have the signup sheet right over here. Be sure to sign.